All right, we're all here, all ready, everybody can talk, everybody can hear. So we're going to welcome everybody to our May 11th Cabarrus County Schools Board of Education Business Meeting. And again, this is an online meeting due to the COVID-19. We've had a closed session and we just reconvened to open session. So our next item on our agenda would be setting the agenda.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, would you turn your video on, please?
Thank you for, where's that? There we go, hello, everybody? So on Board Doc's item 4.01 is setting, adopting the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second and any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, that motion passes and we will move on to item 5.01, which we're going to have to, which is a motion to approve the May 11th Personnel Recommendations.
I'll make the motion, we approve the Personnel Recommendations presented to us earlier this evening.
Second.
Okay, so a motion by Mr. Sheemakers, second by Mr. Harrison. All in favor of approving the Personnel Recommendations? Please say aye, and that includes, that includes the Personnel Report and the Administrator List? Is that correct? Or we have to do that separately?
One motion or two.
Should be in one motion.
Yeah.
We didn't have any principals that we approved.
There was one.
Yeah, we did, we actually have a principal and three assistant principals. So Brian, can they do that in one motion or they have to do two?
They can do one.
Okay.
So you want to include both lists on your motion, Barry?
Both lists included on the motion.
And second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve the Personnel Recommendations on the Administrator list, Administrator Hire List. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Anybody opposed, say no? Okay, that motion passes as well, thank you. We have 5.02 is call for motion to approve closed session minutes, but we didn't get enough time for that, so we're going to have to put that off. So we will move on, in that case, to items, section 6, 6.01, which is Hilbush Ford Teacher of the Month. And Glenda Jones, are you on the line? Glenda?
Her mic is muted.
Do you want to go on to 6.02 and then come back if she connects with us? Okay, then, we will come back to that if we can. 6.02 is the Impact Through Education Awards. Ms. Ronnie Boone, are you on?
I'm here.
Terrific. Could you tell us about these award winners?
Certainly, it's my pleasure. Tonight, we will present our final Impact Through Education Awards for the 2019-2020 School Year. We want to say thank you to our sponsors Equitable, formerly AXA Advisors, for its generosity this year in sponsoring these awards. We also want to say thank you to our partners at Concord Trophy for making the plaques that we present each month. We will present Impact Through Education Awards to students and staff, staff members at Charles E. Boger Elementary School and Mount Pleasant Middle School. And of course, due to our continued closure for the pandemic, we will make arrangements to get each of these honorees their plaques at a later time. First up with tonight's awards is Charles E. Boger Elementary School, and our first honoree is Ella Gray. Ella has been a dedicated and involved student at Charles E. Boger Elementary since kindergarten. During these years, she has had an amazing, she has had amazing teachers and staff to guide and shape her as an elementary student. As a result of her experiences, she has become quite a well-rounded young lady. She's been involved in activities in the school such as chorus, musical productions, Battle of the Books, Math Olympiad, and Art and Garden Club. She's also been involved with Flag Patrol, been a Boger News Anchor, and any other opportunity that came to her attention. Recently, Ella was especially proud to earn the Character Award for Empathy as she strives to be a friend to all and show empathy in all situations. She is a positive role model for her peers and her younger brother. Ella continues to excel in all academic areas due to her strong work ethic and motivation to succeed. She loves music and can often, and can often be caught singing, playing the keyboard, or trying to learn to play the guitar. Boger Elementary is honored to present Ella with this Impact Through Education Award. Our second student honoree from Boger Elementary is Owen Rhodes. Owen is a fifth grader in Ms. Finkel's class at Boger Elementary. He's been a Boger beacon all of his elementary years. In the classroom, Owen is a reading buddy and is always willing to help his classmates whenever he can. His favorite things about Boger are his teachers. He remembers them all. In each grade, he has had awesome and inspiring teachers, and he is so thankful to be at Boger. Owen attends Asbury United Methodist Church and is always willing to lend a helping hand at his church. He has assisted in bake sales, the Fall Festival, and working with Children's Church. When he is not at school or in church, he likes to play basketball, football, computer games, and ride his mountain bike. At the beginning of second grade, his teacher, Mrs. Lawrence, asked her class to write about their goals for the coming year. Owen wrote that he wanted to be the most affable student he could be. He's worked very hard to achieve that goal each year. Congratulations, Owen, on your Impact Through Education Award. Our first staff honoree from Boger Elementary tonight is Mrs. Margaret Cuthbertson. Mrs. Cuthbertson is a first-grade teacher at Charles E. Boger Elementary School. This is her 17th year in teaching, the last 13 have been in Cabarrus County Schools, and all of those have been at Charles E. Boger Elementary. Margaret is a National Board Certified Teacher and has her G L E E enforcement. In the fall, she will begin studies for her Masters in Library and Information Science. Margaret is very passionate about developing lifelong readers in her classroom and in the school. She does this by promoting best practices in reading and implementing reading events. In the community, she serves as the Vice President of the North Carolina Reading Association and the President of the Greater Cabarrus Reading Association. In her spare time, she enjoys spending time with her family, taking nature walks, cheering on the Tar Heels, and watching movies. Congratulations, Mrs. Cuthbertson, we thank you for making an impact through education at Charles E. Boger Elementary. And I know we have a photograph of Mrs. Cuthbertson, Mr. Hughes, could you pull that up, please, so that everyone else could see her? And our final honoree at Charles E. Boger Elementary is Angela Cornelius. Angela is the Head Custodian at Charles E. Boger Elementary School. She's been working at Boger since 2018. She says the best part of her job is the wonderful friendship she has developed with students and staff at Boger. She says it is an honor to work with the staff and students there, and she really appreciates the opportunity to work with so many wonderful people. When she is not working, she loves to visit the various state parks in North Carolina and camp in the public areas of the park. When she's not camping, she loves to rescue animals. She currently has two rescue dogs. Congratulations, Mrs. Cornelius, and thank you for making an impact through education at Boger Elementary School. Now for our honorees at Mount Pleasant Middle School this evening. Our first honoree is Tanner Klein. Tanner is a wonderful young man. He is a joy to teach and is a model student in and out of the classroom. He has a passion and drive for learning new things and is always willing to lend a helping hand. In class discussions, he asks thoughtful and interesting questions. From helping lead class discussions and classes to providing funny stories to share and laugh, Tanner always delivers. His curiosity to learn new things is truly exceptional. He takes responsibility for his learning, to ask questions, and keeps trying until he completely understands. He is very active in volunteering. He is a well-rounded individual and shows leadership by working the concession stand, working the concession stand is an, and is an asset to the Battle of the Books team and the Alps classes. He is a natural leader who is constantly looking for ways to improve himself and others. He interacts with his classmates and teachers respectfully. He is unafraid of challenges and is willing to work through them when they arise. He consistently displays a high level of integrity and is a great example of a model student and model student behavior. His teachers have truly enjoyed teaching him. Congratulations on your Impact Through Education Award, Tanner. Our second student honoree from Mount Pleasant Middle School this evening is Hope DeVito. Hope is a caring young woman who is thoughtful and hardworking. She always puts in her best effort instead of just doing the minimum. She's truly interested in developing excellence in all areas of life. Hope is extremely detail-oriented and works hard on every task she faces. She is extremely helpful to her teachers and supports her classmates. She shows her leadership through working the concession stand, being a cheerleader, being a member of the Beta Club, and a library assistant. She is a definite asset in the classroom and a joy to teach. Hope exhibits all the qualities of a peer leader. She is kind, caring, and eager to help others, students and staff alike. Hope continues a strong family condition, tradition of hard work and dedication. Her teachers at Mount Pleasant Middle have enjoyed having her in their classes. Congratulations, Hope, on receiving this Impact Through Education Award. Our first staff honoree for Mount Pleasant Middle is Jan Holshouser. Jan has been in Cabarrus County Schools and in education for 50 years. That's right, five, zero. She's been a teacher and a technology facilitator during those, during those years, and she is an amazing colleague. She has helped new teachers, trained teachers, and administration on programs and computer technology, has done grade-level intervention with her math skills, and has been such an asset with the new situation with online learning. Teachers have depended on her to be there for them, and Jan has not missed a beat. She will always go out of the way to help someone understand or get the tech support that they need. She's also just a great person to talk to and has a lot of experience in education to share with her colleagues. Starting her career at Harrisburg Junior High School as an eighth-grade math teacher, she quickly moved to the area of technology once it began to play a role in classrooms so she could better serve a larger group of people with her talents. She's always willing to help in any situation and give guidance and support to all school staff and students who need her. Her patience training students and teachers with technology make her, makes her an approachable fixture at Mount Pleasant Middle School. As teachers were developing ideas for online learning, she would research them and send them websites that they, that would help make, help them and help make the new experience relevant. She has gone over and above her job to help everyone. The students and staff at Mount Pleasant Middle appreciate her so much and know she will continue to work hard to make the school successful. Simply put, she is a rock star. Congratulations, Mrs. Holshouser, on 50 years in education and for making an impact through education. And the final honoree for Mount Pleasant Middle School this evening is Ms. Tammy DeVito. In her role as Testing Coordinator and Media Assistant, Mrs. DeVito is always engaging with students and staff. An amazing friend, supporter, and overachiever are all ways to describe her, but they do not even scratch the surface. Mrs. DeVito works selflessly and tirelessly to arrange and plan and meet criteria and regulations for all school, district, and state testing. She makes the entire process effortless, organized, and pain-free for all staff and students involved. She's always willing to go above and beyond her duties to help her fellow staff and students. She's always very helpful and willing to pull students for classroom testing, to meet accommodations for students with special needs, and to help classroom teachers. She's the first to come running when a colleague or student needs anything. She brings laughter, good-spirited jokes, a heartwarming smile, and comfort to all those around her. Tammy DeVito is not only a true and wonderful blessing to Mount Pleasant Middle, but also to the whole community. She is a true tiger through and through, and she's very deserving and is a very deserving recipient of this Impact Through Education Award. Congratulations, Mrs. DeVito, and thank you for making an impact through education. And we say congratulations to all of our honorees this evening.
Wonderful stories, well-deserved recipients, really do make a major impact at their school. Thank you for sharing those. We have five, 6.03, which is Governor's School Recognitions. Are you still online?
Yes, I'm still here.
Could you tell us a little about these folks?
Absolutely. Six Cabarrus County School students have been selected for the Governor's School of North Carolina, the state's oldest, the oldest statewide summer residential program for academically or intellectually gifted high school students in the nation. Criteria for selection includes grades, aptitude, and achievement test scores, and teacher recommendations. Students in the Performing and Visual Arts are required to audition. Nominations were submitted to the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction, and a statewide committee made the selections. Congratulations to the following Cabarrus County School students who were selected. Patricia Costas, Cox Mill High School, who will be, who was selected for English. Nadia Hussein, Northwest Cabarrus High School, selected for Spanish. Anna Hill Mears, Concord High School, selected for Natural Science. Aleah Royal, Cabarrus County, Cabarrus Early College of Technology High School, selected for Natural Science. Aditya Centhill, Concord High School, selected for Math. And Akulay Shiva Rama Krishnan, Concord High School, selected for Social Science. Typically, the Governor's School of North Carolina is a five-and-one, one-half-week summer residential program that integrates academic disciplines, the arts, and unique courses on two campuses, one at Meredith College and one at High Point University. However, we were notified last week that this year's session has been canceled due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Nevertheless, we are extremely proud of these six young people and congratulate them on their accomplishment.
Very impressive young people. It's disappointing they don't get to attend this summer. Hopefully, they'll come up with a solution for that. Okay, so 6.01 was our Hilbush Ford Teacher of the Month.
And Glenda is here, I'm sorry, can you hear me?
I can.
All right, good evening, Mr. Chair, Board Members, and everyone joining us live on the stream. We know that current circumstances do not allow us to gather in person to celebrate. Nevertheless, we are excited to recognize another outstanding CCS teacher as a Hilbush Ford Teacher of the Month. Thank you to Mr. Tim Vaughn and Hilbush Ford for their continued support of our teachers with this recognition program. Our Hilbush Ford Teacher of the Month for May is Ms. Larissa Edwards. Mrs. Edwards is an exceptional children's teacher at A.T. Allen Elementary School. She was nominated for this award by a parent who wrote, "We have known Mrs. Edwards for more than five years. She has been my son's teacher since first grade. She came into our lives at a time when my son was struggling with adapting to school life because of his autism. She worked hard to make school fun and appealing to our son, and she worked with us and our son's neurologist and nutritionist to make sure he received the best care possible. We admire how professional and knowledgeable she is, while at the same time being compassionate and patient not only with the kids but with us, the parents. We have admired and loved her for everything she's done for our son in the past, but what she's done during these last weeks is so amazing that there are not enough words to describe it. Kids with autism are having a hard time during this crisis. Their routines have changed dramatically, but Mrs. Edwards has been there to support not only my son but us too. She meets with the kids virtually every week, keeps daily communication with us to make sure we have answers to all of our questions, and sets up a time during the week for the parents to meet virtually to support each other. She encourages us to keep moving forward, and we will forever remember how during the first call after classes were suspended, in the middle of our fear and uncertainty, she said, "We will get through this, we will be okay." Mrs. Edwards, thank you for the care, compassion, and concern you bring to your classroom, whether it is inside the school building or remotely, and for extending that care, compassion, and concern to your students' families, too. Congratulations on your selection as your, as our May Hilbush Ford Teacher of the Month."
That's outstanding, we really appreciate the efforts of Ms. Edwards, well-recognized. She also arranged to get her plaque as well and her award there?
Yes, Ronnie will work to make sure that happens.
All right, fantastic, thank you for helping us with these recognitions. Board Members, we'll move on to item seven, which is Approval of Minutes. We have a couple minutes from last month, from April 6th and April 20th. Hopefully, you've had time to read those. Have any discussion or changes or comments before we give a motion to approve?
Move to approve the minutes.
I second it.
Okay, move, motion by Mr. Harrison, second by Ms. Carpenter to approve both sets of minutes, is that correct?
Yes.
To approve both sets of minutes from April 6th and April 20th. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Anybody opposed, say no?
Aye.
Well, I heard it was ayes, so that's, it sounds like where that motion passes. Thank you very much. So, moving along. So we have Board Chair and Superintendent Comments, 8.01, this is Board Chair Comments. Again, briefly, hopefully, everybody's enjoyed their Mother's Day. Things are, not a whole lot of updates on the COVID-19 that we had, so we didn't add it as an agenda item, but we're free to discuss that during the course of this meeting. Graduation, looks like that's, we've come to a conclusion on that, an announcement that was made, maybe Dr. Ladder can explain or review that a little bit more. We're working on calendar for next year. And really, just thanks to all our employees here going through this time. I mean, our teachers, our administrators, our child nutrition, our transportation workers, maintenance staff, finance staff, support staff, and our HR staff, I mean, we're still hiring for, for next year, so you all are kind of heroes in my book, and that's really all I had. So 8.02 is Superintendent Comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to begin my remarks tonight reflecting on Teacher Appreciation Week, which was last week. Each year, our school administrators and parent organizations plan events and celebrations to show teachers their appreciation during this special week. This year was no different, it was just more creative. There were many drive-by gift pickups, porch deliveries, mini pep rallies, and online celebrations honoring our teachers last week. I hope they know how much we appreciate their contributions and commitment, and I hope they all enjoyed being celebrated last week. We also celebrate our school nurses on National School Nurse Day on May 6th. Their contributions to our students' health and safety are invaluable. We appreciate the partnership we have with the Cabarrus Health Alliance so that we can have these nurses in our schools. We certainly appreciate the support of the county that provide them. Not every county, as a matter of fact, most counties don't have that kind of support, so it's a tremendous service to our schools, and we appreciate the county and all of our nurses and what they do in our schools every day. Parents and students can find information about grading by selecting the Extended Home Learning icon on the district website. The section includes student and family guides that explain grading and graduation guidelines organized by grade level, because they are a little bit different depending on the level that you're on. Our school nutrition program and transportation departments continue to prepare and deliver meals for students in our community each day, each weekday. You can find the list of meal locations and times on the Locations for School Meals icons on the district website. Again, we appreciate everything these, these workers are doing to provide meals for students every day. It's a tremendous service and something that's great for our community. Our school nutrition program also wants to remind parents to apply for free or reduced meal benefits if there have been changes to any financial situation since the school closures. If they apply now and are eligible, their designation will allow their children to receive meal benefits for the first 30 days of the 2020-2021 school year before needing to apply in August. Visit www.lunchapplication.com to apply for these benefits. Want to recognize three Cabarrus County Schools administrators that were recognized for their leadership. Congratulations to Dr. Mary Beth Roth, the Cabarrus County Schools Middle School Director, who was named the 2020 Administrator to Watch by the North Carolina Association for Middle School Education, and to two of our administrators who recently got their doctorates, Dr. Jennifer Brinson, Regional Principal of the Year and Principal at Wolfmeadow, and Dr. Courtney Smith, Assistant Principal at Hickory Ridge Middle. They both received the Don Chalkar Award for Excellence in Educational Leadership from Western Carolina. Congratulations also in order for the Mount Pleasant High School Awesome Club for its sixth consecutive North Carolina High School Athletic Association Commissioners Cup. The Awesome Club is a student-athlete club committed to serving and supporting their local community. Club members have participated in a number of service projects, including consistent support to the Northeast Foundation. Mount Pleasant will receive a $1,000 stipend as winners of this Commissioner Cup to support this program. And last, we announced last week that we are partnering with the Charlotte Motor Speedway to hold graduation ceremonies for the Class of 2020. Each school will graduate in individual ceremonies at the Speedway on June 12th and 13th. We appreciate the Speedway's willingness to host our schools and also say thank you to State Superintendent Mark Johnson and his team for their efforts in making this happen with the Speedway. We're working hard to make this a memorable event for our students and to celebrating the Class of 2020. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Ladder. So we will move on to item nine, which is Guest Speakers. And how are we going to handle, how are we going to handle that when we can't allow folks to talk with us live? We have them post comments, is that correct?
Brian Shaw is going to read the comments.
Okay, so we did receive some comments. Brian, what did we get?
Let me just check for sure, this is Brian. Mindy, did we just receive the one comment?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay. Rob, would you like me to go ahead and read the comment?
Yes, please.
Okay, this is from, it's an email from Amy Granata, I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly. "Please consider revising the last day of the school calendar for the 2019-20 school year. My son is in second grade and doing a fabulous job with Mrs. Weinbach at Odell Primary School. Since he's in second grade, he doesn't, does not take exams, and the last few weeks are filled with fun activities and field days. The decision has already been made that there will not be any exams this year. It would be a much appreciated decision for parents, students, and educators. Thank you for your consideration, Amy Granata."
And that was the only comment that we, we got?
The only one I've seen, yes.
So, all right, so we will talk a little at the end of this meeting on how we're, how we're going to do our meetings for next month, but at this point, we'll just move on to our next item on the agenda, which is the Approval of the Consent Agenda, which there are a number of items on that. We had some policies. We had one, a couple policies on first read, we had a budget amendment, we have a policy on second read. We have the approval of the additional road improvement funding request for Hickory Ridge Elementary School, Approval Hickory Ridge Road Improvement Change Order Number Seven, and the Approval of the Naming Request for Mount Pleasant Elementary Parent Drive to be changed to Cochrane Way.
I move for approval.
Okay, so I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
I'll second.
All right, so Ms. Furtinbaum made the motion, Ms. Blackwell made the second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, we will call for a vote on the Consent Agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, say no? Okay, that motion will pass. Moving on to our action items, Action Agenda, we have six things on our Action Agenda, and 1101 was the Approval of Policy 433450357354, Use of Unmanned Aircraft. Brian Schultz and Ms. Burns, are you still online? We had some new information today.
Yes, I'm here.
I'm online.
We had, I guess, some comments from the NC DOT Aviation Department that I sent over to Brian Shaw, he had suggested, he needs a little bit more time, and then maybe the committee take a look at that again. Do you all concur with that, or?
Rob, this is Brian Shaw.
Yes, Brian.
I do want to look at the NC DOT comments, obviously. There's been some correspondence as to whether we should go ahead and approve it on first reading and then let the committee look at it. approve it on first reading and then let the committee look at it. We should just remove it from the calendar. And I would be okay either way, and we could, the, the policy committee is next week. Certainly could evaluate the NC DOT comments by then. I guess the question is whether you want to go into that policy committee with a approval on first reading. Perhaps some revisions come out of that meeting, perhaps not. But that would place it in ready to be approved on a second reading in June. Revised or not revised?
If there's if there are substantial revisions, does that mean you can still go to second reading, or would it have to go back to first, first reading?
I think it can go to second reading. It all depends on how substantial they are. You know, what's the meaning of substantial? And we don't know yet, but as I look at it, my inclination is that the changes, if there have to be any, will not be so substantial as to basically create a whole new policy. I think it would just be working around the edges.
Okay, so what's the pleasure of the board? Do we want to vote on this tonight?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to go ahead and move this along through the process with what Mr. Shaw laid out as a potential updates, but we don't know it, so instead of losing a month, I'd like to get this on the books, so I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I'd like to second, please.
All right, so we have a motion by Ms. Furtinbaum, a second by Mr. Harrison to move this along on first, approve on first read. Any further discussions? Okay, let's vote for that. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All, anybody opposed, no, and I'm going to say no. One. Okay, that, that motion passes six to one.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Could you ask everybody to mute? There's so much feedback in this, I don't know, I think it sounds like there's a lot that's not muted, if they could mute while they're not talking, that I think it would help a lot.
Okay, let's, let's try as Holly suggested, if you are not talking, please put your microphone on mute, mute, and see if that helps any. Just got to remember to unmute if you are talking. Okay, 11.02, we have the 2021 Early College RCC Memorandum of Agreement. Mr. Allrata, are you on, online here?
I am, good evening.
Fantastic.
So there were two items I just wanted to follow up with from last week. The first was 5.5.2, which, Mr. Shaw, you pointed out the language in there said hour instead of RCC, and I reached out to them, and they're going to make that change in the finalized option. Dane, that's 5.5.2. Just quickly go to it and point it out. So it says network installation changes or any other cabling, and then it says to our physical property or our equipment, we will change that to RCC to make sure there's no confusion about who the entity hour is. And then the, the other one was not in the MOU or the MOA, it was sending, you had asked a question about the number of students from KCS, and I'm apologizing for not answering that question, it's succinctly last week, but let me give you the answer this week. So the agreement that we have is between Kannaplin City Schools and Cabarrus County Schools, so it doesn't fall on the agreement between Southern College, and I know that you had that kind of answered last week from the standpoint of who's on it, and then I also got a chance to talk to Ms. Black. And Ms. Black goes over to Kannaplin's Middle School, works with their principals, or their principal and their counselors, and has a good working relationship to do recruitment, just like we do for our middle schools here in Cabarrus County. So if you have any additional questions, I can take those now.
Okay, questions from our board members? Okay, it doesn't look like, make sure you unmuted your microphone if you have something to say. And I don't see anything in the comments either, so it looks like we're, we're good to vote on that, so I would need a motion and a second to...
I move for approval.
Okay, so we have, do have a motion by Ms. Carpenter, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Harrison, so this is the Approval of the Early College RCC Memorandum Agreement for 2021. Let's vote, if you're all in favor of that, please say aye.
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 Anybody opposed, say no? Okay, hearing no objections, that motion passes seven to nothing.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to 11.03, and this is the Academic Calendar Review, and a lot's been going on this week, so Brian, can you give us an update on where we are? Are you online? Brian?
Yes, sir, I think I'm ready to go here, I'm sharing, going to go ahead and share my screen. So thank you, Chairman Walter, and good evening, Dr. Ladder, members of the board. I would like to give you an update from last week regarding our 2021 Academic Calendar Review, so I'll go ahead and begin sharing that, and just know I won't be able to see comments, so if someone can help me with that, if any comments come up as we go along, so just want to bring to you the purpose and goals, and that's to provide a review of the feedback, clarify recent legislative interpretations, and recommend approval of the proposed academic calendar changes for the 2021 school year. Our goals tonight include that we have a common understanding of the legislative calendar parameters, provide an opportunity to review feedback and consider the CCS Calendar Committee Recommendations. And lastly, the Approval of the Changes to the 2021 Academic Calendar. So we'll start in on, so what are the legislative requirements? And reviewing some of the feedback that we received, it's really clear that, that the legislative requirements are not always clear to everyone, so I wanted to start with some of that, so as of last week, when, last Monday, when Governor Cooper, Cooper signed Session Law 2020-3 into session, the legislative start date is now August 17, 2020. The legislative end date is no later than June 11, 2021. And then there's some legislation surrounding the Student Instruction Day requirements. Those include 185 days or 1,025 hours of instruction. You'll notice in subsequent slides that we really refer to the hours of instruction in our calendar. In addition, the five remote learning days, that is, that is new verbiage that we've had included in this legislation, so an additional five remote learning days. And one thing that was interpreted this week that we received new information was the five additional full days that are not an accumulation of hours. So essentially, it's ensuring that there are five additional days on top of that 1,025 hours of instruction. Eleven holidays. Number of total days for 10-month staff is 215. A minimum of 10 annual leave days and a minimum of nine teacher workdays.
So there's no additional days to staff for?
No, that was, that was one of the things that, you know, it's been a little point of discussion is that, you know, we, 215 days has been the standard for 10-month employees for quite some time, and so even with these additional requirements, there was not an allocation of additional 10-month staff workdays. Any other questions there? Okay, there are additional legislative requirements, but those are the main ones that really factor into the development of this calendar, and certainly provide any legislative reference that we have if you want to see most of them, but these are the ones that had substantial impacts in developing and revising this academic calendar. That'll move on. So just a review of our timeline, we've been really busy with this. As soon as we heard that they were, had developed some drafts, we jumped on this as a calendar committee. And a reminder that on our calendar committee, we have staff members that include administrative members, hourly employees, teachers, board members, and we also have parents represented on that committee as well, so it's a, it's a very inclusive representative committee of our community and our staff. So on April 30th, we had that first meeting, reviewed the, the House and the Senate versions. And then on the 4th, we met with the committee, and at that time, on the 4th, Governor Cooper was actually signing the Senate version into session law. And then again, on the 4th, we met with the board, if you recall, last, last Monday in our work session, and reviewed the drafts. And then since we met last, we provided feedback opportunities that included, you know, really everyone, all the stakeholders. The assistant principals and principals had a specific session with them the day after the board meeting, and provide opportunities for all Cabarrus County's employees, as well as really all citizens of Cabarrus County, to review a recorded video and then respond to a couple of survey questions that we put out there. And then today, May 11.
We had quite a few responses to that survey.
Yeah, we did. We'll see in a moment, I'll review some of that, we had a total of 663 respondents, so we were very thankful to, that so many people are interested in that and gave us their, their feedback. So today, again, we met with the Calendar Committee, we, we provided that update on that latest interpretation of those five additional days that are not accumulated hours. And then provided some additional, recommend, an additional, one additional recommendation to one of the calendar versions based on that, and you'll see that here shortly. And again, I'm very thankful for that Calendar Committee, they have been really responsive, and I think we've had, you know, 95% plus attendance on those, those last three meetings that we've had with them. And then, obviously, this evening, we're taking a look at the feedback as well as the recommended changes, and then we'll recommend for a final vote on that. So the feedback, we had 663 total respondents. And of those respondents, 377 clicked the box that they were parents, and they had an additional 64 that clicked the parent box as well as another category. So they kind of represented, you know, two roles in their, in their feedback, so well over 400 folks that considered themselves parents, that provided feedback. We also had 199 Cabarrus County employees that just checked that single box, and in addition, we had 64 additional employees that checked this, the CCS employee box as well as another category. So question, very simple, is a review, folks reviewed a video, an overview of the calendar legislation, and then the proposed calendars. And we just very simply asked them, what would you change? And we kind of lumped those into two categories, some parent responses and then staff responses, so you'll see, these are kind of what I consider the top five in terms of percent. We had, so this is, remember, what would you change, we had 26.9% disagreed with the start date. Now, as we just reviewed, that's a legislative requirement, so that, that one is out of our hands. And then the second one, 14% of the respondents said we disagree with remote learning. Well, once again, that kind of falls in the legislative requirement, so remote learning, we don't, you know, we don't have an impact on that, except when we win and where we place those days on our calendar. And then we had 13.5% that said we want to keep the current schedule. We had about 10% that says it looks good. And even though they're supposed to put something that, that we changed, they said it looks good. And then we had 8.9% that said we want early end dates at the semesters. We go on and look at the employee feedback, and again, the question was, what would you change? We had 17% of our employees had a different remote learning schedule. We had 16% that disagreed with the 8/17 start date, again, that was legislated. At 15% said it looks good. At 12%, it said we want semesters to end by winter break and/or Memorial Day. But about 12% said to keep the current start date of 8/31, again, that's the legislated mandate that we can't change. And then we had about 11% that related to the workdays or the holiday schedules in terms of wanting to change. You know, we'll jump into question two, so what would you keep the same? Parents said, pretty overwhelmingly, 74% said they like the start and end dates. Like the workday slash holiday schedule, 6% said that. And 6% that said, looks good. Like the remote learning day, 6% gave feedback on that. And then about a little over 4% said that they liked the days off for RNC. Then our employees said, 34% said it looks good. 33%, about another third, said agree with the start and/or the end dates. 17% said they like the workday slash holiday schedule. 8.9% said they like the remote learning. And then 4% said they like the remote learning schedule, so those are kind of the overall themes, and then the kind of the top five in terms of each category that and their responses. So I'll kind of pause there to see if there's any comments from the board.
So it's David Harrison's table.
Yeah, Rob, I do have a quick question. I was trying to read that, and y'all know I've been out of town, so I was trying to go through some of those comments. So I'm, I need to know how that was done, is, so do we assume that if 33% just say of the employees agree with the start or end dates? I mean, is it, is this out of what percentage, what, what kind of formula are we using? Does that mean the rest of them didn't, or where does that come from?
It doesn't mean, so they were just asked to give a narrative on the comments, there weren't like selections, it was an open-ended response. So what that means is that of the 100% of the response, of the 633 respondent, or no, actually, that when we break it up into categories, it's less. But of, of the overall respondents in those categories, a third of the employees said it looks good, a third said that they agree with the start, starter and dates. So it wasn't like, it doesn't mean that when they say that it looks good, it does not mean that 56% or 66% said that it looks bad.
You're just giving us the summary, so we don't have to read all those, every, every comment.
Correct.
Yeah, I was good with that, I just wanted to make sure I was interpreting that, because there didn't seem to be any type like, you know, formula or key or, you know, statistical numbers there behind us, I couldn't make that make sense, but that sounds great, thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Okay, you want me to read David's comment?
Yes, please, I can't see the comments at this time.
It says, for continuity of student learning and consistency for teachers and staff, is it possible for school to begin August 17th onsite in classrooms and for the following next week for schools to use technology to allow virtual learning with some of the same instructional methods as teachers are using now? Rather than stops, start, stop, start approach, wouldn't virtual classes during the second week be a better demand of teachers' efforts and use of county resources for a smooth new year?
Yeah, I mean, I can respond to that, I think that's, you know, that's certainly one option. You know, the Calendar Committee, you know, looked at several options there and recommended what we have. You know, if we use our remote learning days, it was a long conversation that we had on the Calendar Committee, that if we use our remote learning days early on in the calendar, then we lose some of their flexibility, you know, initially, we had all the remote learning days over the week of the Republican National Convention, and we ended up moving some of those later in the calendar because of some potential flexibility with inclement weather. So, you know, for example, we could, if we have inclement weather in January, and let's say we have a remote learning day on March 26th, you know, Dr. Ladder could issue that, hey, we're going to swap out those days, we could on, in January, we're going to use this remote learning day and then swap that out with that March 26th face, and have a face-to-face day. So later in the calendar, it actually gives us some flexibility with inclement weather, weather, and, you know, ultimately, I think the the Calendar Committee, you know, thought that was a better idea to plug some of those in later in the, in the school year, especially when the legislators kind of, you know, kind of narrowed down the, the, the five additional days, the five remotely learning days, on top of then the hourly requirement as well. We, we thought that we might need as much flexibility as possible with, with inclement weather. I hope that answered that question.
No more comments, Brian.
Okay, no, okay, we'll move on then, and we'll take a look at some of the recommendations in the drafts. So what I did to the left, you'll see the the graphic there, basically just a check mark if it met the requirement or not. And what you'll see on the right then is the the calendar. So this first one is the calendar without the RNC. It was, it was a lot more simple to make the necessary changes to this one. In fact, there were no recommended changes to this one from what you viewed last week. And then we did verify, yes, it met the start date, it met the end date, met the hourly requirement, met the remote learning days, the five additional days, and then all the holidays, annual leave, teacher work day and 10 month, number of 10 month days. So this one met all the requirements. And then ultimately, you know, the calendar committee reviewed the feedback today, listened to the legislative clarification on that, those five additional days, and decided to to leave this one alone in terms of recommendations. So I'll pause there on that one to see if there's any comments or feedback.
So Brian, the green, the light green shaded boxes, because we don't have the legend on here that I see.
Yeah.
The light green shaded boxes are workdays?
That's correct. So the the dark green are the required, the the cap days. The light green are optional teacher workdays. So they're all work, all the green are workdays that don't have the orange box around them.
Okay, so on this calendar, looking at spring break, because there were some spring break comments in that parent feedback, those end up being teacher workdays, not student days?
Are you talking about, you're talking about March 31st and April 1st?
Correct.
Yeah, so those are both remote learning days. So they have an orange outline around over the box. So those are remote learning days. And remote learning days are, can, teachers have some some options on those days? So they can do one of three things. They can engage students in in live online learning those days. And this is all in the legislation. They have the option to, as long as they prepare online learning for the students prior to that day, they can take that day as a workday, or they can take that day, they can actually take leave that day. The reason they were placed there prior to that April 2nd, Good Friday, April 2nd, really was for what I referred to earlier. In the event that we have inclement weather, those days could actually be swapped out for, if we had inclement weather, say, on January 29th, Dr. Lauter could say, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna make January 29th now a remote learning day. And swap that out with March 31st and make that a face-to-face day.
Okay, but I think that what the commenter said, and I hadn't really caught it in looking at the calendar last week, was that we are very likely to see diminished student participation on those two days.
Yeah, and and I think that we, you know, the great thing is we have some experience with that now. And, you know, living with an educator, I'm I'm hearing about that quite frequently too. And then there's some strategies around that. And then having some days prior to those remote learning days and how staff can message the importance of those days and incentivize or do things to ensure that students are engaged those days. We know we've got some, some, you know, savvy skills under our belt now that we can help with that. And that still doesn't mean that some students won't participate. But I think what we have some lessons learned to help at least reduce that.
Okay, so right now, we have our remote learning days paired as a two-two-in-one. Is that right?
On this calendar, we do, yes.
Okay, because I had sent my questions last night about concerned if students need to take a school device home for the remote learning days, which most likely they will, that it's a tremendous amount of work to distribute, check in, check out, or check out first and then check back in, ensure nothing has been put on, especially the laptops that shouldn't be visible to other students, and then to rebuild the carts for where they have carts. So.
Yeah, so we are, we're strategizing on some things to mitigate that, Ms. Fernbaugh. And so I, I, I won't go much further into detail on that. But we are considering, you know, not only these remote learning days, but, you know, the the possibility that if we go into a, you know, a spike of COVID cases, that we might be out longer than one or two days. And and how we can be more nimble in the distribution. And obviously, you know, looking at additional devices and those types of things would certainly help help with that. So, you know, we're not deep into the planning of that, so I don't want to comment too much.
Okay, and I think we probably just, because of the uncertainty going into the school year, I think, you know, from our standpoint as the board, we need to be open that we may have to tweak some days in between the start and end. You know, at some point.
Yeah, I, I think this is, I think this is all going to be very fluid next year. And, you know, and again, I'll save my comments on that. But yeah, I think that, you know, this is the the best thing our our legislators thought they could do for a calendar this coming year. And, and, you know, there's a lot of what ifs, you know, heading into, you know, the opening of school that only a certain amount of parameters can provide us. You know, and I think that if we have to go out for school again because of a COVID spike, could be longer than five remote learning days, right? So I think this is, you know, so we're trying to make the best out of this that we can, for sure.
Hey, Brian, I have a quick question. So I know this is a learning curve for everybody in this whole process, and I'm sure y'all are still working on a lot of, a lot of the pieces and parts. But I'm hearing still that, and I know that, I guess it was Spectrum that had offered the free internet service for those that didn't have it and, you know, that whole entire process. But I'm hearing that they're getting bills. So some things have kind of went wrong in that. Or do you, have y'all gotten any of that feedback as far as the people that really truly didn't have access that would have tried that and then had issues with it?
I personally haven't heard that, and I'm not sure if if Mr. Legrand has or if Mr. Hughes have. I personally have not heard that.
I think that's one of the questions I've had about these five remote learning days. And we evidently have more people out there that do not have access to the internet than I think we thought. I'd love to hear the feedback that y'all have gotten from that piece of it as well. And to move forward into mandated, how do we address the ones that definitely don't even have it?
Yeah, so we do have some strategies on that. We've actually looked into the purchase of hotspots. And we do have and have distributed some hotspots for students. We prioritize seniors first. Homeless students and seniors were at the top of our priority list in terms of distribution of hotspots. And again, you know, as we receive, you know, federal funding and, you know, COVID-19 funding, those types of things, devices and hotspots will be at the top of our list to help mitigate some of those issues.
Oh, well, this seems like a.
Hey, Holly.
Yeah.
I only heard one situation about the billing. But it sounds like the providers who had said they were providing free were also not shy about marketing other services.
Right.
And so people may have signed up for more than the free service, and they didn't realize the accompanying cost to it.
Right. I feel like we need to get, I don't know, a resource center or something somewhere that will finite some of these details because, you know, it seems like, and I know y'all have done a really good job in what you, what you have done. And there's a lot of problems that will have to be worked out later. But I just thought, gosh, for, you know, to mandate that and not have that process, you know, I don't know, I just had a little bit of pause with that, Brian.
Yeah, again, I think we're, as those problems come up, you know, and even the consideration of, well, what if employees don't have internet? And, you know, we, so we just, you know, those are the kinds of things that, you know, as we receive the information on that, we have found a way right now for cases that we've known in terms of access and the lack of device. We've found ways to to assist with that. And, you know, and again, I, it's been, you know, I'd say it's, I won't say it's been challenging, but I say it's, it's been somewhat infrequent. But as those come up, you know, we're able to brainstorm and apply some fixes to those things. And I know Dane and his team have looked at, have worked with Spectrum, and I don't, you know, I won't speak for Dane, but I know that they've worked with them and been in contact with them. And, you know, I think everybody's learning in this process, and we certainly have. We're in a lot better place right now than than we were two months ago with all of that. And I think we'll be in a better place as we start the school year next year to help alleviate some of those things.
Right, you know, my thought was, you know, we're a large system, you know, 34,000. If you're a smaller system, you can get control and, you know, wrap your mind around what's going on. Probably, you know, there's more availability to talk more so to all parents or the majority of them. But we're such a lot, large system, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, parents and or employees that don't have access have a way to get that information to us. Because I thought, you know, if we're holding kids accountable for grades, and this next year, if those remote learning days will be, you know, grade heavy, but yet they don't have access, I don't, I don't, I was just curious what y'all were thinking about that.
Yeah, I, we definitely, teachers have made multiple rounds of phone calls, and there's been multiple contacts, especially for students who haven't, who have not, who they've noticed have not been online. And again, speaking from some personal experience, you know, married to an educator, and, you know, you know, been witness and heard phone calls with translators and, you know, different multiple news, ways to contact and meet with students and ensure that they're online. And and a lot of that I've seen has met with a lot of success. It's certainly not come without the challenges too. But again, I think as we respond and problem solve on this, we're figuring out new ways. And, you know, we'll continue to do that. And certainly, if, you know, anyone comes across, you know, something, we need to, you know, we need to be informed about it so we can help address it.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so this is the the version without the Republican National Convention. This one was a little more simple in terms of creating a a schedule that didn't have, you know, the week of the Republican National Convention in it. Again, we are going to plan as if we are having the Republican National Convention in terms of what we're hearing, you know, recently, as recent as Friday morning, is that plans are moving ahead with the Republican National Convention as planned. Of course, that certainly could change depending on how COVID-19 cases, you know, expand or not. So we'll move on to that, the draft that I first showed you last week with the Republican National Convention. And and again, I'll put up the little checklist of the requirements. So as we learned about the additional day, the five additional days, we realized that there's no other way that we could meet the hour requirements, plus do the five additional days with the remote learning days. And so I I could have put an X next to the five additional days or put it next to the time requirements. We went ahead and put it next to the time requirement. And so that was one of the pieces of feedback, because we got clarity on that Thursday and Friday. And I want to thank Mr. Shaw for his assistance on that as well, that we had to get feedback on that piece of legislation, that wording in the legislation as well. So, so we went back and got feedback from the calendar committee today. We had some some recommendations on the table. And what you'll see is that now we have met, you'll see the requirements, and that we have met all of those requirements. And what we did was made the decision to take the workday, the teacher workday off of October 23rd in order to meet the that time requirement that we were a little bit short on. And, you know, so if I go back to the previous slide, you'll see the the 23rd, and the first draft that you all saw was a teacher workday. And then we removed that, made a face-to-face student day. The feedback from the calendar committee was that, well, that's, you know, that's the end of the nine weeks. They like to do parent-teacher conferences there. But because we maintained the two, the back-to-back teacher workdays, just six workdays later, that parent conferences could be held during during that time. So that was in addition to after school, before school if necessary. But we had two days back-to-back where teachers could still in a reasonable amount of time, hold those conference days. So that was the one change that was recommended. So not any massive changes since you saw it last week, with the exception of that, in order to meet the legislative requirements. So I'll pause there and see if you have any questions.
So Brian, we always have extra hours on the books to cover for extra bad weather days. Where does that leave us if we're that close to the?
It doesn't leave us with days, with days to waive at all. In fact, this version leaves us with 2.5 hours to waive. So we would have to move into makeup days. And again, the other option in this calendar, and I'll kind of hover around those, that we would be able to swap out March 26th, like, so if we had inclement weather on January 29th, Dr. Lauter could say, okay, we're going to move the face-to-face day to March 22nd or to March 26th and move that remote learning day to January 29th. So there is still some flexibility with inclement weather. We have, you know, some makeup days we could potentially use along the way. We could always, you know, use this workday as a makeup day. We could, obviously, we have two remote learning days that we could swap for inclement weather days. And, you know, there are some other scenarios that that we could use in order to make up time. If we needed to, we could add time to the day, even though that's not a favorite thing to do. There is still that option. And and again, I think the, there, there are, there's a lot of questions in terms of about, well, what happens to the whole calendar if COVID cases spike later on in the year? So I think that, you know, we'll have to come back and redraw the whole thing. So, but yes, you're absolutely right about that, Ms. Fernbaugh.
So because we're still at where we are, you know, this early for the next school year, should we be looking now at the bus routes? I mean, I, I personally don't believe we're going to be in a normal go-to-school with a full load of bus, kids on the bus in August. But if we were, and that's, we can only speculate, should we now look at adding that five minutes a day to at least accumulate another day or two?
Yeah, I think it was, it was hashed around a little bit in calendar committee, but not too much. And I think just because, I mean, that that is one way you could approach it. I mean, I think the other way is, you know, to to wait on, we've got, there's a governor's committee working on a reentry, there's a task force, and I understand there's a Department of Public Instruction task force as well that are going to make some recommendations specifically on returning to school. So I think until we have those recommendations, you know, my recommendation would be to hold on doing that. But again, you know, you know, there's a lot of speculation and all that, I think.
And just do the best we can right now.
I think so. With the task force, you know, coming into into play, and and they're going to make some specific recommendations on how many kids can ride on a bus, and how many students can be in a classroom, and, you know, and how often we'll be able to have kids in the building or not. There's just so many unanswered questions. And and we also have a, our leadership team at the district level is right now is working on our end-of, end-of-year processes, pickup, drop-off, closeout, you know, not only at the school site, but at the central office level. And then that that team is then going to, and they're already looking at some of it, but then they'll do a primary shift in looking specifically at reentry. And and we'll be looking at some of those drafts that are out there on, you know, how other states have done it, how our governor recommends, what DPI recommends. And and so that team will be working specifically on reentry for Cabarrus County schools. So we've got a team in place. We have things to consider in place and are putting some processes and actions into that as we we are gonna, we gotta, we have to lock out the processes for end-of-year first to make sure those are communicated. We're, we're pretty close to that. And, you know, we'll be very soon kind of publishing some pickup, drop-off, end-of-year, you know, transition-type directives pretty soon. Okay, any other questions on this? Okay, any other questions on this second draft and the recommendation that includes the Republican National Convention?
One question I have, when we vote, could we vote for a, a draft with the convention, with the convention and without the convention? So we're covered on both bases?
Yeah, I think I, Mr. Shaw and I talked a little bit when we were working through some of the legislative verbiage last, on Friday. We kind of talked through that. So he may have some recommendations for the board on how to, to draft that motion to make sure that, that you don't have to come back and re-vote on two options that are viable depending on the situation.
Yeah, this is Brian Shaw. I think you could vote on one calendar with the other as a backup or as a contingency, depending on whether the Republican National Convention takes place or not. I don't have any particular language designed yet for that, but you can come up with it. The main thing is to just make it clear that one is contingent on the convention either occurring or not occurring.
And Brian, at that time, would, or before that time, would the board be advised to kind of pre-authorize a superintendent to make those decisions quickly so that in the use of, of the superintendent's expanded authority right now, in the summer or fall, when, or sorry, the late summer, when those decisions have to be made, the, would the board be smart to go ahead and tell, for that calendar purpose, to allow the superintendent to make that decision between one calendar or the other? So that there's not a delay on our part for the whole system?
Well, you could. Though I would envision a motion that's pretty clear-cut as opposed to Dr. Louter having much discretion. You know, it's, if the convention's canceled, then this is what we do. If convention's not canceled, this is what we do. Unless the board wants to give him that discretion to, you know, given the uncertainty, just say, let him make the call even before the decision is made.
Time will be pretty crucial at that time. And I hope the board won't be in the way, so to speak, of that either plan being implemented.
Right. That could be in the motion. I don't recall exactly the language that, of the emergency resolution you passed a couple of months ago, you know, about the calendar. I think this is, my sense is this is different because this is the annual calendar as opposed to adjusting to circumstances, you know, momentarily. I think you'd want it in the motion if, if you want him to make that decision before getting back to the board on some expedited basis.
Well, the condition would be in the motion, would be in the motion. If they have the, the RNC, it's one. If they don't have the RNC here, it's another one, right?
Well, that's what I was thinking. Like I say, that's, as I envisioned it, it was kind of clear-cut. You basically have a motion, I think, that presumes the convention is going to happen.
And again, the reason why we, we don't have, we're, we're off those days is because the SROs are needed for the RNC and won't be available for the schools.
That, that is correct. The, the, both law enforcement agencies indicated that they would need staff for that. In addition to some safety concerns that, that law enforcement has raised, we'll have delegates, delegates staying on, the delegations staying on Burton Smith Boulevard and some hotels along that area. You know, and there could potentially be some activity around those areas that may not be conducive to students riding, you know, in a bus through those areas. So that was one of the, one of the additional safety concerns that law enforcement brought up.
So we're acting upon those recommendations to not have school that week.
Yes. So I just, I'd be remiss if I didn't say a special kudos to Sue Burns and the Calendar Committee. They're really great. And you do have at your disposal the, the drafts of the Early College, the Wolf Meadows Year-Round Calendar, as well as the two drafts that you saw here in the Traditional. And Sue's been working diligently with those principles to ensure that the, all the legislative requirements that I mentioned earlier were, are in those as well. And there were some new legislative requirements around year-round schools. So Sue and myself have worked with Ms. Brinson out at Wolf Meadow to ensure that her calendar is reflective of what's in current legislation. And she's following the 45-student days followed by 15, what they call vacation days. Not all of those are vacation for staff, but it's a 45-15 model that's, that repeats throughout the, the calendar year. So that, that's what's reflected in the year-round calendar. And then the Early College calendar, actually, RCCC starts on the 17th. So that was a nice, that was a nice thing that happened in this is that we actually have the same start date as RCCC. So our early learning colleges are starting about the same, at the same time that our traditional calendar starts. So those drafts are in there. Sue's done a great job of reviewing all those and ensuring they're in compliance.
So Brian, I have a question on that. So the Early College says first student day is August 5th, but the Rowan first start date is the 17th, as you said.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
The, on the calendar that is in Board Docs, if I'm reading this right, it says the first class day is August 5th, but Rowan as a college starts on the 17th.
Yeah, I may need, Sue, I may have loaded, I may have actually loaded the wrong one. So let me check on that. And Sue, if you've got any, anything to add to that, please chime in.
Sure. The, the students do start August 5th. They do, they do work as classes before they start the college courses. So they'll, they'll work, they'll do orientation-type activities and others. I don't know exactly what they teach them, but they are in school for two and a half weeks, or for a week before the, the college.
So the law cuts out an early college exception? Is that what we're being told?
I'm sorry?
So the law that was passed, it cuts out an early college exception? They don't have to start?
Right. Early colleges and year-round balance calendars. Yes.
The early colleges did have to have the remote learning days and meet that hour requirements and the five additional days as well. They have had flexibility on their start dates.
Yeah, and they end so much earlier. So they really need to, yeah, be starting earlier.
So was there any way in one of these calendars, either the, with the RNC or not, to end the semester before the New Year or Christmas break or winter break?
Yeah, we really, we discussed that at pretty great length in Calendar Committee. And, you know, I think there's a, there's a strong desire. I mean, that's, you know, one of the reasons why we talked about that, you know, innovative calendar, considered it so much. And, and then that loophole was kind of closed in the legislation. You know, there, that is ideal, you know, honestly, to be able to have a, a calendar like that because it corresponds with, you know, higher institutions of higher learning and, and many other reasons as well. But when we looked at the balance of the number of instructional days that it would take in order to do that, and I think in this last version of the one, even with the, with no Republican National Convention, there were 84 days, 84 instructional days first semester and 91 second semester. And as you all know, some of these courses are just chock-full of content. And teachers need as much time to teach the content as possible. And, and so, you know, ultimately, from an instructional point of view, it really doesn't suit the, you know, content coverage to be able to, to have two semesters that are, have, you know, seven, a difference of seven days in those semesters. And then you're really cutting one short in order to teach all the content that needs to be taught. So ultimately, we decided not to do that for that reason.
Okay, thank you. One other comment that I, I read through those 600 or so comments, there were a number of them that were for parents and from teachers that had, had plans for vacation in late August. And this calendar would interrupt that. And they were worried about, again, their plans and being held harmless. Is that what we're planning on doing for staff and families that already had vacations planned?
Yeah, well, we haven't blanket said what we would do in those cases. But, you know, as, as we have, as we work through this and we talk with principals about it and give feedback, you know, those will be treated on a case-by-case basis and, and, you know, worked with through the principal levels. And we'll certainly have some, you know, recommendations on that as we meet with principals. You know, one, one is that, you know, I don't know that anybody knows for sure that they'll have a vacation. So that's still, it's one of those things that's still up in the air. And then, you know, so it's kind of like we, we need to cross a couple of bridges before we get to that one. But it's on our radar to know that we need to address those things in a, in a very, you know, human manner.
Okay, just let, you know, I read that there were at least a dozen of them, but fifteen threw out of that 600.
Yeah, for sure.
Brian, can I ask one last question, please?
Yes, sir.
And forgive me if I'm looking at the wrong thing here, but I'm looking at one of the calendars. And I believe November 3rd is an election day on which the schools would be closed. I'm not sure, I'm not sure if that is marked out on all of the calendars as a set aside unless I'm just, just under my nose somewhere.
Yeah, I don't, I, right now I can't because I'm sharing my screen. But I do know at least on these, the versions that I showed you, we do have that marked out as a remote learning day on the, the version without the RNC. And we have that marked out.
He's talking, he's talking about early college?
I'm sorry, that's probably what I'm looking at wrong. As long as it's accounted for the regular school sites.
Yes, sir.
Okay, any more comments or questions from board members? Laura, do you have an opportunity to ask questions? I take that as a yes, maybe? Carolyn?
I'm, I'm okay.
Okay, who hasn't asked questions? Barry, have you spoken? Have you asked?
I've been trying to follow, but I've not been able to see any of his screen. I've just had to follow on what was in Board Docs. And I've been following it that way. So I have no more questions.
Okay. And then Cindy and Holly have got all your questions answered?
Yeah, I'm good. Thanks.
David?
Thank you.
Whoops. Okay.
I'm good. Thank you.
All right. So what are we asked, being asked to vote on today? Or are we asked, we are being asked to vote? Is that correct?
Yes, please.
Okay, outline, outline again what you'd like us to approve.
So I would recommend that you approve the, the recommended calendar with the Republican National Convention labeled and also approve as a contingent plan the version without the Republican National Convention.
So what about the Early College? What about the Wolf Meadow?
Well, and those all have those versions. So those would all correspond with, with those, you know, recommendations. So you'd approve the Early College, the year-round schedule and the Traditional schedule. You'd approve the, the versions with the Republican National Convention in. And then the versions without the Republican National Convention would be the contingent calendar in the event that the Republican National Convention was canceled.
Okay, is that cleared, everybody? If so, somebody needs to make that motion and we'll need a second.
Can I ask one question?
Yes.
There are seven calendars listed on Board Docs. The first one is Academic Calendar Review. If that's out, then the other four, the other six are the ones we're approving. Is that correct?
There should be six total.
There are seven in Board Docs.
Does that include, is the, it might be the document that is the PowerPoint?
It is.
Okay. All right. Perfect. I was just looking at the calendars.
All right.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the three calendars. It'll actually be six calendars total, but we approve three calendars that have no Republican National Convention. So if there is none, not a Republican National Convention, then we will have that calendar adopted and then approve as a group, the three.
To illusion?
Oh, excuse me. The motion is to approve the three, the three calendars listed with no Republican National Convention. And if the convention is not held and, and they're listed as no RNC on the three different calendars, and then approve the three calendars during the Republican National Convention. And they are listed, one is listed as during the RNC. The others are called Draft, RNC, Remote. And the other one is with a W, lowercase W, RNC. So it wasn't consistent with the rest of them.
You're referring to the calendars that are posted on the Board Docs?
That's correct. The ones with the no Republican National, RNC, no RNC are very, are consistent, but the others are not consistent. So you have to.
With the naming?
Yes.
I'll second the motion to approve the six calendars as presented.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, let's vote on that. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Anybody opposed, say no. So I don't hear any noes. So that'll be it. That motion passes seven to zero. All right. Thank you, board members, for that item. We will move on to 11.04. Brian, still got, Brian and Kelly Klutz, we're going to talk about the State Resource Officer Program contract with the City of Concord.
Okay, I'll recommend approval of the SRR contract with Carveris County as presented last week. If you have any questions, definitely would like to field those at this time.
So board members, did we get all our questions answered on this?
I'm moved for approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Carpenter, a second by Mr. Harrison to approve the contract for the SROs. This is for fiscal year 2022. So all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, say no. I didn't hear any noes. So that motion passes. Thank you. I'll move on to 11.05, which is the Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment. So Mr. Cohen or Mr. Louter, you on the, on the line here?
Yeah. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. That's Brian.
Hey, Brian. So what do we have different that was added since last week?
Uh, we, yeah, the only thing we've added is y'all had asked for a bid tabulation that was a part of this amendment request. So I did attach both bid package one and bid package two as requested. You know, this is a little bit different than what the board is used to seeing. Typically, we have a general contractor that just provides one price or bidding contractors, as I say. With this being a CM at risk, the subcontractors or the site contractors in this. With this being a CM at risk, the subcontractors or the site contractors in this instance were bidding to the construction manager at risk. So it's, again, the, the format is slightly different. You know, the end result is, is essentially the same. You've got, you know, a list of bidding contractors, all the different allowances that were a part of that or alternate prices, I should say, that were a part of that contract. And you have a low bid listed there, sparks grading. There were two different bid packages as we discussed like last week. One was for the, the overall site work and then the second bid package was for the asphalt curb and gutter.
So this guaranteed maximum price, that's the protection for us, is that our understanding?
It is, yes, that's, that's the, that's the, the price that the, the amendment will be, that we're asking for the amendment to be approved on. And again, this is already funded through Cabarrus County. This is just a portion of that, that larger piece for the entire project.
So Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Go ahead, Ms. Cindy.
So the alternates, Brian, we're taking all of those. These are not really typical ad alternates what we're selecting, is that true?
Yeah, let me, I'm gonna, let me go to my screen, I'm sorry, because I can't see the shared screen. So the, so the alternates that we are accepting. No, the, the alternates that you see under the BP1 on the site work package. We did not accept those alternates, we accepted just the base bid. The number that is a part of that, that is included in that base bid or those allowance numbers over to the right, the unsuitable soil, the mass rock and the trench rock.
Okay.
Those are captured within that base bid price, but we elected to not accept the alternate prices presented as such. Again, one of the luxuries of bidding the job out this way is we can rebid that work with another company when we bid the building package. So it gives us kind of a, you know, that's gives us a baseline of what we think it might come in at, but we have a chance to bid it again. You know, if, let's just say, a, a straight up concrete contractor that's doing the flat work on the job wants to bid the exterior sidewalks and the basketball court and some of the other items on there, this gives them the opportunity to do that.
Okay, so I think the motion needs to include that specific reference, does it not?
Well, the amendment is for the amount, and if you look at the, as another, as a part of the attachment that I had Mindy upload for us, there is an exhibit that breaks out a little bit more detail, the exhibit of the items included.
And I'm looking to see which one you're including.
Yeah.
Because I can open it bigger on my own screen here.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm going to it, I'm doing the same, so.
Okay, so the base bid on the bid sheet, BP1 bid sheet, is 3718. And then I don't see that same number, so there's something else added in there.
So the, the 3718 includes, if you follow on the, the bid, the bid, the bid tabulation sheet. If you follow that across to the allowances over on the right hand side. You see the unsuitable soil of 25,000 cubic yards, $50,000, the mass rock and the trench rock.
Right.
Those numbers are included in that 3718. When you go to the amendment breakdown that you're looking at, the 3557800, the 3,557,800.
Okay.
You see below that, the allowance, there's listed out separately. They've pulled those out of the, the base bid number just as a line on this exhibit.
Okay, but we don't, we don't have those numbers to cross reference, that's typically what I like to do. I'm not challenging the numbers because I'm not a construction expert, but I try to make sure everything lines up across the documents.
Yeah, so, so, and it is, the, the format is just, again, a little bit different. Normally, we may see a base bid and then add the allowances into that number and then you see a total at the end.
Hey, Brian?
Yes, Holly?
That is, that is confusing, I have to agree with Cindy, and it is different. I mean, I don't know, if you didn't know that, you wouldn't know it, you know?
Right.
So Brian, based on what I see. Oh, fiddles. There it is. The Sparks Grading got the majority of this contract, is that correct?
That is correct, he, he received all the site work and then the, the bid, the bid package two, which is the second sheet or the second page. I'm sorry, second attachment. That's the, Fairby was the low on the asphalt grading curb and gutter.
Okay, I can find that one on that chart, that's the easy one. I actually found a number on there that I recognized, so, so the asphalt paying, I found that one, but the 3557800, I'm struggling.
The only difference, the only difference in the site work number is that the, 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 the bid package or the bid tabulation sheet has the allowance numbers included in it. Versus when you look at the exhibit, they've pulled those allowances back out in that number there, the 3,557,800. And listed separately, the unsuitable soil allowance of 50,000, the rock allowance of 60,000, the trench rock of 48 and the BX1100 of $2,200.
All right, so if I were to put my little calculator to work.
Calculator together and add those up, they would all add up to the.
So I would take 30, I'd take 3,718,000 and I subtract.
Yeah, sure, yeah, you can subtract them.
And then I would come up with the number.
Brian, the one number that's not included, so when I look at the document that is Exhibit A that lists the numbers vertically as opposed to horizontally. It only counts the numbers from the beginning of the site work section down to the 10 Sar. Does not include the general surveying, is that right?
Surveying, no, that, that's under, that's not a part of the, the subcontractor's price, that's under the CM at risk.
Okay. It would be really great if these documents could tie out to each other in, in an easier format.
Right. Well, and, and, you know, going into the bidding of the, of the building, we'll have 46 of these different bid packages, so.
So may want to standardize something so we can have a little more understandable.
As Brian was trying to mention, you probably don't want to see all 48 bid packages. You need to speak to the bottom line and what everything's going to cost total to make sure we're within our budget.
Well, that is, that key is, are we making the budget?
Yep.
So Brian, on the bid package two.
Yes.
The same thing there, alternates nine and 10 are not included, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, so it's only the 1315 number and the allowances?
Correct. I'll be happy to speak with Shellco and see if there's a simpler way we can, can lay this out, just to have to review and to, to look at.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, because I, I'll even say, and Holly's really a project manager in her role too, just a different thing than I did. But if I can't easily tie it out.
Yeah.
I'm not going to spend hours sitting here with a calculator.
I understand.
You've got to.
Hey, Brian?
You've got to.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah.
I was just going to say, I mean, I'm not real sure why, you know, this is really hard to follow, even in, you know, my role.
Right.
So if they would make it more clear that the allowances are included in that price.
Okay.
I mean, even if they have to do like an Excel spreadsheet, I mean, we can cover it in a motion, you know, to carry, make sure that that carries through to the contract. But I'm thinking that the backup documents really should be a little more clear, you know, of what we're, you know, which number are we actually using?
Sure.
And since the city tap fees and county fees are on here, are those already known numbers? Or what happens if those are plus or minus?
Those are the, those are the known numbers right now for the four inch meter and the four inch capital recovery fee.
Okay. Yeah, we know those for sure.
Don't we, though?
Yes, we do. Okay, so if there's any variation on any of these costs, does that just go back into like the CM's contingency fund or?
I, no, it would just, it would not be billed to us, it would just go back into the, you know, it would be that much less on the contract.
Okay, so just from a financial standpoint, does Kelly still pay the individual contractor or does she pay Shellco?
The county will be, or, Ms. Klutz, do you want to speak to that?
On this particular one, they, we're issuing this to Shellco, right, Brian?
That's correct, yes.
And so the county will pay Shellco directly.
Okay. But I know you give the okay that the work is done, that's what I was asking you.
Yes, yes, we do, yep.
Any more questions on, on this item? Somebody else is going to need to make a motion.
I'll make the motion that we approve the bid tab that we were, the, the contract amendment, Exhibit A for the new Cabarrus Middle School, early site work, and we approve that contract as presented.
Second.
So we're approving an amendment, right, is that what that is?
That is correct, yes.
I'm sorry, I forgot to say amendment.
Okay, so you have a, a motion, Mr. Sheemaker, a second by Mr. Harrison. Any further discussion before we vote? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Hearing no noes, that motion passes, thank you, Brian.
So let me just say one thing to Brian.
Yes, sir.
Brian, it might be helpful on the bid tab, when you do those selections of the bid alternates, since you had them numbered above and whatever you want to include, just list them off to the side, so we, yeah, so at least we have something to go back to. That was the biggest problem, was trying to anchor in on, find out exactly what was included.
Yes, sir, I will.
I think that'll help the best, thanks.
Okay.
All right, thank you, so we will move on to our last action item. Tonight is 11.06, Legal Services Contract, and this is just a follow up from last week. Where we've had our attorney review, we've gone, we've talked about costs, we've presented with some proposals. We were given a recommendation and we had, we, we said to move forward with increasing our retainer from, I think it's 5,000 a month now to 30,000 a month. And it talks about what, exactly what was in that proposal from last week, it's just there on paper now. So I'll open it up for discussions and Brian Shaw, you're welcome to chime in.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for, actually, Mr. Shaw, I guess. So this is effective July 1st. So do we pay the retainer fee at the end of July, like we would normally pay after the end of the month, for the month of July? Because we'll, in July or early August, we'll still be paying the June bill, I'm just wondering what the cycle is.
Yeah, this is Brian, the way I have it drafted and the intention is, for example, the new rates go into effect July 1. That retainer of $30,000 would be paid in August retrospectively for July.
Okay.
So he would send a bill for our July services in August and part of that bill would be the $30,000, then the rest of the bill will be anything that's litigation, if any.
Okay.
And Brian, this is David, is this essentially option 2A that we discussed last week?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
And it's set up as an addendum to the current contract rather than a new contract.
We had talked about potentially doing an RFP for next, next year, so we're just extending, extending the existing agreement out another year.
So I just, Rob, I just want to clarify, I guess, for anyone who's listening or watching the streaming. That doing the larger retainers, what we did for a number of years, probably more than 15, before we changed attorneys. And this is an attempt to get our, our hands around our legal costs once again. As opposed to paying by the hour, by the drink, so to speak.
Yeah, consistent, consistent, knowing what the bill's going to be generally for, for, for the year.
Right.
And this is Brian Shaw, just to make it clear that we did run these numbers versus what our billings have been on the, when everything was calculated in hourly rate, other than the 5,000 or, or smaller retainer. And thi- this would have resulted in lower attorney's fees each year.
Which one would result in?
The, the larger retainer would result in overall lower attorney's fees had it been in, in effect for the last couple of years.
There's a cap, I mean, some of those months were 50, 60,000.
Because, because this puts, it's a high retainer, but it covers everything other than litigation.
Okay, and do we also need to say anything about our construction, our local construction attorney firm? Or we're just going to let that roll unless we make a change to it?
That would not be part of this. I don't remember exactly what the last vote you had for your construction firm. So whether they have a contract that's coming to the end of, you know, coming to expiration on June 30 or whether it continues automatically unless terminated.
Okay, I'm guessing Kelly, you might have that, can you look at it for the June meeting?
Yes, ma'am, I'll be happy to.
See if we need to do anything?
Yes.
Probably not, but just in case.
Doesn't hurt to look.
Yeah.
Primarily, we've used them for the AIA document that we had, that we just voted on, or, or voted on earlier this year, is that correct, Kelly?
I'm sorry, could you ask that question again?
When do we use that other firm?
The, when we used the firm.
Hartzell.
Hartzell, when we used them, when we were doing the AIA contracts with Shellco, they were involved with that, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct, yes.
Okay, so we, we don't use them except to deal with construction projects?
Yeah, it, it is definitely a smaller legal service provider, minimal.
Especially now since the county is doing a lot of the purchasing of property, so we, we don't have to deal with that expense anymore.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Everybody get their questions answered?
I'll make a motion that we enter into services with this amended contract offered by Schwartz and Shaw.
I'll second.
Okay, so a motion by Barry, a second by Cindy, to approve the amendment to the Legal Services Contract. All in favor, please. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Anybody opposed, say no. Okay, that motion passes, thank you. Okay, that was our last action item. We do have a need to continue our closed session, I guess pursuant to General Statute 143318-11A3 and 143318-11A6. So I would need a motion to reconvene in closed session. I do want to take a brief recess. You sent some emails with some information for that closed session, take a little bit of time to read that and grab something to drink or eat, and we can reconvene probably 8:15.
Are we going to a different Skype session?
We are.
Okay.
So there should have been an invitation sent to you on your calendar. If not, let me know, I can add you to it.
It's probably here.
You may need to send that to me again, I apologize.
No, look at it, it's new.
Okay, brilliant, okay.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion, we go into closed session.
Okay, we have a motion to go into closed session. You have a second?
Second.
Second, and we'll go back at 8:15, correct?
8:15, we'll start again.
Okay.
So, okay, so we have a motion by Barry, second by Cindy. All in favor of going back into closed session, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, say no.
And Rob, I may need that email, please.
I'm going to say goodbye, good night to our listening audience.